Is that Jolene?
Yeah.
Okay.
Turning the recording back on.
I don't know, there's a lot of information there. I don't know if anybody has any questions before we... Obviously, everybody got their packets, but I just want to make sure because there's a lot of, lot of names on there. Anybody have any questions?
We need to discuss those back in closed session. So if there's anything specific about individual. Which is fine.
Okay. Alright, so Juliana did the second and all in favor? I?
I.
No? Staying? Alright, so now, talking about future dates. Obviously, our MSBA Spring Regional Meeting was canceled on April 23rd, which is obvious tomorrow. And then I gotta, it looks like we've got a set date on the graduation August 6th?
Yeah. Yeah, we had a new graduation date. We put it out that far, you know, we wanted to make sure we could get through the summer. Hopefully, at that point, we can have a graduation. We secured the same venue.
Okay.
I know, you know, our, our concern obviously is, at that point in time, there's going to be some kids that are ready to move on. They're going to go on, start their lives doing other things. And so we're going to miss out on some of those kids. We recognize that families may have some vacations, some other things going on. It, it's just, we're trying to make the best out of that situation. At least putting off that time to give families enough time to schedule and plan and kind of coordinate. So I know even right now, there's some concern from a few, I'm not working, but it's hard to meet everybody's needs. So, but we're excited to have, hopefully, a traditional ceremony and, and have that opportunity for kids, so.
Good.
Set the mansion, yeah, still at the mansion. They were really great about, part of that scheduling was trying to work a time that worked for them as well. Yeah, so, and you know, felt like doing it outside probably was. Because the heat.
Yeah.
And those kinds of things. So we're, we're excited and hopeful and hopeful that we can have graduation.
Good.
Those kids deserve that, so.
And then on the next one is our, on the retirement reception that is.
Can I just give you, yeah, can I just give you a quick update on that? Another group of employees that just feel shorthanded. I was talking to a teacher the other day who was pretty emotional because you're not going to be able to be in her classroom ever, you know, every.
Yeah.
We are, we're, our administrators are working on some things to do, some posts and some different things. We have some gifts that we're trying to figure out. We're still trying to recognize them to the best that we can from a day. So, but we won't, we won't be holding that typical traditional retirement reception.
Okay. Okay, and then, yeah, well, the, the next one is our regular monthly meeting, which will be on May 27th. Obviously, we'll wait and see if things change with that. Looks like just more information, just because we just don't know. Everything's probably going to get reevaluated on everything, so. So I guess we'll just go to the reports and communications.
Just a second, Matt. Cody asked about after graduation while going, you were originally still holding out.
You know, we haven't discussed that this week. We, we haven't discussed that for a little bit. It's kind of, I think, fallen off my mind with everything else. So we do need to bring that back up. Yeah, well, we'll see what your suitor and the high school team to see kind of what they want to do with prom, so.
Oh, prom, okay, yeah. Understandable.
Ask the question about the date. So we've got to be determined for the May date. Are you thinking about anything for like a board retreat?
Oh, I was going to bring that up in a minute, but we can talk about it now. Yeah, so we really want to have, Travis and I have talked about that just the other day. And we want to have our retreat after the strategic plans adopted, so that we know going forward this next year, here are our goals and here are the things we're trying to tackle. We've scheduled July, June, dates in June for the action teams to present to the Strategic Plan Committee in preparation for the June board meeting. We were hoping May, but that's just not going to happen. And we've also tentatively have some dates set in July. So we want to have a face-to-face, we want the action teams to present face-to-face to the strategic planning team before it comes to the board. So I was thinking late July board retreat. After the strategic plan is adopted and we can work through those things, so. With our work, we'll kind of see how things go.
To be determined. Alright, I guess we'll move to the MSBA report. Can we do the film or?
Yeah, we can. Well, we'll see how well it works.
Okay.
But we'll go ahead and play it now.
Hey, there you go.
No, we didn't do communications, did we? Was there any questions about the communication report?
No.
Oh, sorry. No questions, so jump right in. You have to let me know how it goes.
Can you hear that?
It's good.
Hello, everyone, and welcome to this special edition of the Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report. Our world has been turned upside down by the coronavirus pandemic, and the impact on our schools has been profound. School buildings throughout Missouri have been closed and playgrounds are empty. Teachers and students are adapting to education at home through online learning and other creative ways to teach and learn. And our schools are not only providing instruction, but also are providing essential services to students and families. Many districts are providing meals for students twice a day. MSBA Executive Director Melissa Randall has this message for Missouri's school leaders.
We at MSBA cannot thank you enough for all you are doing to support our students during this extraordinary time. It is truly inspiring to see the heroic efforts being made in school districts throughout our state to continue the education of all students and provide them with essential services, including meals. That is what public schools do, and we are so proud to play a role in supporting you.
The many event cancellations included this year's round of MSBA Spring Regional Meetings. We have recorded the presentations that would have taken place at those meetings, and those presentations will be available for viewing through the MSBA website. One of the most significant changes this spring is the cancellation of statewide testing, including the MAP tests and end-of-course exams. Commissioner of Education Margie Van Deven says the decision is aimed at helping teachers and school leaders focus on more immediate concerns.
There is a time and a place for statewide required assessments, and now is not the time. Effective immediately, Missouri will be canceling statewide required assessments for this school year.
Following the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's decision to cancel statewide testing this year, the U.S. Department of Education announced that students throughout the nation impacted by school closures would not have to take federally mandated standardized tests this year. Another significant change this spring is the decision by Governor Parson to move the April 7th school board and municipal elections to June 2nd. Despite the election date change, if a district has the same number of candidates as positions to be filled on the school board, the district will not have to have an election. Those candidates will take office in April and begin their service. Reorganization meetings for school boards must take place in most school districts by June 16th. School closures and stay-at-home orders are also having an impact on school board meetings. Virtual or electronic meetings are possible, but there are some issues to take into consideration. MSBA Associate Executive Director and Staff Attorney Susan Golddamer says the public is still entitled to attend a board meeting, even if it's held electronically.
To make sure that the public has access to their meetings. Now, that's easy if the public has internet and a computer, because a lot of school districts are considered live streaming video conference meetings, for example. But it becomes a little bit more complicated if you start considering that some members of the public do not have access to computers and internet. And so, school districts certainly can provide virtual meetings, but do make sure that you appropriately notice them and make sure that all members of the public have access to them.
Golddamer cautions school boards that the state's Sunshine Law limits how votes are taken electronically. She says school boards can take roll call votes electronically, but only by using video conferencing. You can find more guidance on holding virtual school board meetings on the coronavirus resource page of the MSBA website. There are numerous resources posted on that page created by MSBA staff and from reliable sources, including the Centers for Disease Control and others. Those resources are being updated constantly. A new federal law is providing some relief for schools, families, and school district employees. It's called the Families First Coronavirus Response Act. Among other things, it provides states flexibility in administering the free and reduced lunch programs. MSBA Susan Golddamer says the new law also is designed to help employees who cannot work because schools or daycare facilities are closed.
They extended the Family Medical Leave Act to allow for employees to take FMLA leave and, in some respects, paid FMLA leave in a situation where the employee can't work because they need to stay home and care for son or daughter whose school is closed or, and whose daycare has closed.
The law also creates an additional two weeks of paid leave for employees who are quarantined, self-quarantined, or who are caring for individuals who are quarantined, or for a son or daughter whose school or daycare has been closed. That's it for this special edition of the MSBA Board Report. Thank you again for everything you're doing to support our students during this crisis. Stay safe and healthy, and so long from Columbia.
Alright. And I'm assuming, Kim, there wasn't anything sent for any questions or anything that I'm sure.
Well, the only question was, is, that follows on the agenda, and it says, "Education groups from around the country are advocating that the state and federal government help close the homework gap by ensuring that all students have reliable home internet access." Does your board support this initiative? So, do we feel it's the responsibility of the state and federal government to provide internet to all students? Basically, I feel like that's what it comes down to.
I do.
I don't know that I need an answer, a verbal answer, but, you know, so maybe, Matt? Ladies, I can ask you guys this question because you guys were here before. And so, would you typically just do a verbal response, or would you do a written response?
I think there's usually discussion.
Okay.
Yeah. It'd be fine to discuss it, just because we do get along well as a board, so I think that would be fine.
So what do you guys feel? Do you feel like the state and local government should be responsible for internet access?
I think in these times, we're really, when we talk about internet access, it's like infrastructure. It, it's such a necessary part of our world these days, and especially in our area. I know the frustrations that I hear about people that don't have access to internet. It's not, it's not that they maybe can't afford it, it's just that it's not even, it's not even available to them. And I don't think we're talking about the, the federal and state government actually providing it, just making it accessible, so that people can, there's, you know, parts of our county where people are still having dial-up.
Yeah, I think that's a good point. Two different pieces there. Providing, as opposed to just having towers available in their area, so that they could. A little bit different conversation.
I would say that even at our house, for the last two weeks, we've not had internet access. Just because Suddenlink, the availability is there, but the line is broken somewhere. And every time it storms, the internet goes down. And so, it's, it's not that it's not available, it's available, but it's not reliable. And so, no, it doesn't work. And so that was one of the que, the questions that was brought up. I will tell you guys that in the Economic Committee that we had with the Chamber of Commerce, that we are working with local entities to be able to provide reliable internet service for the area. And I believe that that's the problem, is it's not that it's not available, it's just not reliable. I mean, because we have internet access, but literally, I have access maybe five days out of the month at my house.
See, that's ridiculous.
Yeah.
We have media com, and it's very reliable, but I know Suddenlink and CenturyLink both are problematic.
And bandwidth limits.
Yeah, and like, we have a tower that's just down the road, it's probably within a mile and a half to two miles. But I just, like, it's storming today, it just sits and spins. And so, you know, it just depends, and even when I had DSL, it didn't work half the time. So it's, it's just really sketchy for our district, and it doesn't matter really where your towers are and what you have. And if you do have broadband or dial-up, that's just ridiculously slow. You can't do anything with that, so.
Now, if the state wants to provide, and I know the hotspots don't work, but the state feels like, you know, every kid needs access to be able to do online education or whatever, then they could give districts more money to be able to buy more devices to, I mean, that could happen. So it's more done through the school organization as a needed thing.
Well, and maybe the government could put in some stipulation, so things like Suddenlink would be expected and required to make their systems work, where it would not be acceptable for Kim to be without internet 25 days out of 30.
Yeah.
I would agree definitely with that.
We use the same company. Now, I can get it every day at some turn during the day. And that's one of the things I was worried about, was that, you know, I can be starting to stream, and I can be great, everything high-speed is working, and then five minutes later, I sit here and watch a spinning thing for 10 minutes.
See, that's ridiculous. In the United States of America, that's like a third-world country.
And, you know, like, my sister and brother-in-law, they, they bought like a $600 boost so that they would have that, and, and it's a lot better, but I don't know that it's perfect, you know? And, and that is options that people go for. But again, you know, I, I don't know what the best answer is here. I do think it would be a lot of regulation, and it would be, you know, they, they would really have to step it up. Because, because there is availability of towers, I think it's just our area.
Yeah.
Well, it's very expensive in Southern County, as I was.
Yeah, it is.
If you talk to them, the reality is the cost of reliable internet to house and the lake is incredibly expensive. And so until the businesses somehow expand past the main areas, there's, there's just not a profit to be made. And I would love for it to be on a wish list, but the state of Missouri has a lot to pay for, and I can't imagine that one being at the top of the list personally for me. Well, and so I kind of feel like, you know, we were without internet. And so we've got one of two options. We either remedy that by being able to do wirelessly, or you go to the office, where you've got media com in Kimberlyne City, where you've got other options. So who's responsibility, to be quite honest with you? Sometimes I feel like we, we put too much responsibility on the government to take care of us. But I do feel like that's, that's twofold, because I do feel like that maybe it should be an option. I don't know. I don't know. I don't know what the answer is.
Or it is kind of, Anne said, it's part of our infrastructure, necessary piece now, but I agree with what you said. Enabling.
Yes.
Yeah, I definitely agree, and state and government need to probably just influence those companies to maybe step it up a little more. Because I do know through the years of living here, that, and I, that was one of the main reasons I bought this house right next to the schools, because they said, "The lines are fiber optic to all schools, so make sure you buy a house next to the school." Because if you live in anywhere else, you're not going to get anything. So I do know that by living here all my life. It's funny how the government probably pushed on the, all the schools to make sure they get everything they need, but they didn't think about the rest of us. So it just seems kind of odd. They obviously influenced that. I think they can influence it to go further. My opinion.
So Kim, you've got a missed review. Yeah, so we've got quite a response there. As long as it doesn't fall back on the school district, how about that?
Yeah, exactly. We don't want, we can't do it.
Yeah.
As long as responsibility. Yeah. Okay, I'll respond. Thank you, guys.
You bet. Thank you, Kim. Alright, so I guess we'll go to the superintendent's report, the attendance enrollment report.
Yeah, I'm just going to kind of go over, you know, not go through that at all. I would like to say, as I begin, first of all, I want to express appreciation to you as board members for, one, for being leaders in our community and being a positive voice during this time. I know a lot of people that you associate with look at you or kind of looking for direction. And I know sometimes you don't have all the answers, but I know your hearts and your passion and your desire to just do good and to really serve our community, so I really appreciate that. There, so much good has come from this. It's interesting, when you, when you have trials, how you can just see so many positive things come to light. And I know you've been tapped into our, you know, our food services and what's, what's happening on a daily basis, well, at least on a weekly basis, and we're doing it three times a, a week now, providing a lot of food for a lot of people. And all those employees that are just coming up and volunteering their time. You know, we have the, the relabs and the motivational videos that are happening. We have administrators that are awesome. I mean, I just feel so blessed that they're working a lot behind the scenes to really move forward. I think a group that maybe sometimes we don't talk about as much as we should is our instructional coach group. They, I mean, they have been remarkable. The amount of effort and work that they've done to work individually with kids. I mean, with teachers, as they've been trying to prepare this whole new way of teaching. It's been amazing, and, and all the teachers, and, and I couldn't go past today without giving a shout-out to Rochelle and to our, our administrative assistants on this special Administrative Assistant Day. And yeah, so it's nice that I got to spend some time with Rochelle today. We haven't seen each other for a while. But we appreciate the work that they do. I'm going to jump in and I'm going to share a different screen here, so just bear with me. Let me find my. Okay.
Well, while you're working on that, Cody, I just want to tell you how much I appreciate what you've done. What an initiation for you as, in your first year, and all the leadership you've demonstrated in helping us rally around. I really appreciate it.
Thank you for saying that. It's really, it's funny that you mentioned that. I've had, I've had time to think about this year, and I'm sure Travis has as well, and others, just full speed, 100 miles an hour, and then we get this. It's like, what are we doing? You know, I was thinking today, just working today, and next year's going to feel different. You know, it's, we have accomplished so much in such a short amount of time. I mean, we always put way more than a year's worth of work in a semester.
Yeah.
And, and now to have this, which this obviously isn't the way any of us wanted the year to end. And we're starting to have conversations, okay, what is this celebration going to look like when we get back together in August? Because there is so much to celebrate about this year, so much, so many good things have happened. It's just going to be really exciting to see your, next year, the following year, just the progression of the district and where we, what we're doing for kids. Super, super blessed. So I appreciate you saying that, Anne. We're going to jump into the budget discussion. I kind of started off with this quote. Uncertainty is the key word here. As I have consulted, I've had a lot of Zoom meetings, I've had them with Bessie, I've had Zoom meetings with Big A Conference, with the Tri-Lake Superintendent's, I've had it with some of the financial experts throughout the state. So there's a lot of common verbiage. Everyone's like, "We don't know, we really don't know." There's a lot of uncertainty. I think that's really how we need to approach the budget development going into next year. And so we're going to kind of walk through a few of those things. I'll start off by just sharing. At this time, I mean, we're seeing, experiencing some, so it's all shared in your, on your computer. Hopefully, you can see it.
Yeah.
You, we have some savings that are happening right now, just because we're operationally shut down. I mean, I've kind of listed some of those things that we're, we're saving some money on. So that's a positive right now, which is something that we need. We need to have a little bit of cushion. As you know, going into this year, I think we ended last year with about 70% reserves, which doesn't leave you a lot of, really a lot of wiggle room to be able to deal with the crisis. And so that's one of the reasons why we want to build up some of those reserves, to have those fun balances, so that if something like this happens, we're going to still be okay. I'm anxious to see where we're going to end. I know before, before this pandemic hit, I thought we'd end around 19% reserves. So we'll see, you know, we'll see how, how it turns out. So I just wanted to list a couple of those things. I could share this PowerPoint with you when I'm done, so you have some time to look over it. So these are just for this, this fiscal year, some of the negative impacts. You know, that obviously we're not taking any kind of tuition for the childhood. Our investments, you know, when we get money, we have that extra money reserved, we have that in different investment accounts. That may be impacted. Decrease in state revenues, depending on how the formula. I, I think this year is really going to be okay from a state level for the most part. Prop C sales tax, people aren't, businesses aren't open, people aren't spending money. So I anticipate, and I'll show you some data here on that, so we'll get into that in a little bit more in a second. Obviously, the mill reimbursement. Now, we're, we're not providing as many mills, but we're providing quite a few. And, and most of those are all going to be reimbursed, I mean, they're all going to be reimbursed. We actually might make a little bit of revenue on the mills that we're distributing. So that, that for us really won't be a negative. Any questions?
No, you answered my question. I actually was wondering if we were being reimbursed for any of the mills that we were distributing.
Triggered what, what happens in summer school, all those mills are getting reimbursed. And it's really, the mills are open for any kid in the, in the entire district area, so it doesn't have to be a student. But yeah, so that's, that's good news. Jonas has been great, and Steve working through those waivers and all the paperwork on that.
Maybe this is a good time to ask. I have been asked multiple times how it is that we can provide free food now, but we can't during the school year. And my answer has been, because we're getting reimbursed for all of them.
They have.
Not just those on free and reduced.
For all the kids. It's a summer, yeah, it's exactly, that's, that's a perfect way. Summer school waivers, give food to all kids.
Okay.
We would love to be able to have that same scenario throughout the year. Perfect response. From a state level, obviously, you know, there is some, I, I don't know, doom and gloom's the right thing. I, I think we just don't know what's going to play out, and the longer we're in this situation, obviously, the worse it's going to be. But we can expect, you know, our sales tax and income tax to drastically drop. The Prop C revenues, I'm going to show you here, obviously, because businesses are shut down. If you look over this little chart here, where we are at, this chart shows where we are at as of February 2019. If you look at bottom row, we were already trending below where we have been trending over the last few years in terms of state collections. And you can see it, 63.9%, they're on the right. So we are already kind of having a lower year, not a horrible year. Now, March was interesting, because March was when we first jumped into this pandemic, and actually Classroom Trust went up, I mean, we're buying stuff, mostly toilet paper, I think, but they were stocking up, right? My wife was. We got a lot, well, yeah, actually, the funniest thing is, I went shop, I usually don't go shopping with her, and I went shopping, and I'm like, honey, they are going to think we are courting. I mean, what are you, she's like, Cody, this is the normal trip. I'm like, what? Oh, shocked, where my money goes, right down. Refrigerator. So it's trending lower. So, so again, we, we don't know exactly if, if things bounce back, but we should anticipate that future collections will be uncertain. If you look at back in the recession of 2008, during that timeframe, those few years, we were, it dropped, Prop C dropped about 10%. So just to kind of give you a little indication of what potentially could happen with Prop C funds. Classroom Trust, obviously, people aren't gambling. Now, during the recession of 2008, Prop C actually didn't go down. People still were gambling, but I think this is just a different scenario. That one, I mean, I personally didn't feel the impact. I've been, this, everyone's feeling, everyone's feeling the impact of that. I think, you know, the likelihood that people are going to gamble at the same rate that they were in 2008 during that recession, I don't think that's going to be there. So I think we can expect some, some decrease in, in Classroom Trust funds, but we'll, we'll see. Now, transportation funding, it's getting cut. It already is getting cut. I don't know how that's going to play out. I, I look back at this month. the monies that we receive, we receive on average a little over $17,000 from the state on transportation, which is Steve is, it's a, it's a drop in the bucket on what we spend, so it's minimal. I would, I mean, I kind of put down there on C there that it might be reasonable for us to not budget transportation at all. I think that's the area that's not gonna come. So, which is 17,000, it's, you know, they've already hit us so hard on that one. It's like, so Jim Moody is someone in Missouri. He does a lot of reporting on finances. Everybody kind of looks at him. You know, sometimes with speculation, sometimes he's spot on, but kind of looks at him as a guide for some financial things. And he did a study in 2017. And Murray was listed in 2017 as being in the bottom 10 of states in terms of our ability to withstand a recession. And you can see kind of what the impact, he had, he had said, you know, that report, it said that with a mild recession, Missouri would lose about $1.2 billion in revenue, and if it's severe, it's about 1.6. So Jim Moody is saying, you know, at the time, this was a week ago, so who knows now, but a week ago, he was anticipating a billion dollar loss in revenue in state Missouri. So that's, you know, a big deal, a big deal for everyone, not just education for everyone across the board. So a lot of this speculation is just, again, depends on how quickly we can get those businesses back up. And it sounds like the governor has, you know, they're having some plans to get some non-essential businesses back up and running and some things, but it's gonna be a phase, a phase process. So this year, you know, so kind of going back to this year, we have no withholdings from the state funding formula at this point. We, you know, with, with regards to even some of the potential proxy, and we may be able to make up some of that with some of these other waivers, like the food service waivers, we may be able to make some of that money to bridge that gap of what was taken away, what we're losing. So I'm not really too concerned about this year. This isn't really an overall concern. Now, if, I think the, but I think I heard that the legislature decided, I don't know whether, it seems like every day I'm hearing something different, but they're, they're advancing the budget. They're working towards the budget now. I think with the early, with that early May deadline, I think that's still where they're at, last I checked. There's so many news sources, it's like, hard to know what to listen to. But, so one of the areas that can be really hit in terms of the state general revenue is education, public education. It's one of those areas that's unprotected that they can really take the hammer or the axe to start chopping away. So I put transportation in there, obviously, as one of theirs. So we'll see what happens as they prepare and draft their budget. So we've already been, you know, the state, the states have already received some, some aid from the federal government. And so there's been about 13, well, 208 million for Missouri, and this is this first part of this CARES Act. What we've been told that it's gonna come to the district as Title I funds. The estimate is, they're estimating around 82% of what our title allocation is. I wish I would've got that number. I can't even think of it off the top of my head. I can't think, but they have all this criteria. Now, it's, it's gonna be sent to us via title funds, but it's not going to be required to be, to use on title programs. That's just the avenue that they're using to get the money to us and all the documentation, all that. So it's going to be utilized. One of the primary things that'll be utilized is just ensuring employees get paid. That's the biggest thing that they're worried about is just making people, make sure people get money. So as of, I think my webinar was Thursday, my last one, that we still don't know what that's gonna, how that all play out, or even when that money's gonna come. But that's, that's some good news. Well, I don't know if you keep on printing dollars. I don't know how good that is. Can't be too good. I wish I could do that. And then there's another three, well, 54 million for Missouri that was given to use at Desi's discretion both for public education and higher education. And we, we don't know how that will impact, if at all. So maybe they're using that money for some of the high-speed internet access stuff. I, I don't know what they're gonna do with that. So we haven't, we haven't heard the details of that money that's been released. Then we get into, you know, really looking, so next year's budget, you know, I think we could set with revenues I'm concerned about, but I'm really even more concerned almost about the following year and, you know, the impact on local tax revenue. And there's some discussion and argument, the way the statute's written, that these businesses, they're, they're to pay taxes based on, one, based on the capital that they're, the income that they're making. And if they're not occupying their businesses during the shutdown, are they gonna be, be required to pay that assessment for those months? So are they gonna be assessed for 10, 10 months out of the year, you know? So the longer we're in this, it just leaves a lot of uncertainty. For us, as a district that's 70%, I mean, we rely so much on local tax, local money. This is the one that I get most worried about. And, and just the fact that, I mean, I think we may have been talking about this last board meeting, but the longer this hits families and individuals, how are they gonna afford to pay their taxes? And so then they become delinquent taxes. That means we're not getting our money. And the way last month, last year rolled, we were, we were better than I thought we were gonna be. We didn't have to worry about taking out, taking out a tax anticipation note. But if that money doesn't come in, in that December payment that we're usually waiting for, you know, because our reserves are 17%, now it depends on how this year goes. It could be another tight year. So a lot more delinquent taxes getting paid. And so that's a concern because our, our county, as we discussed, and maybe even last board meeting, I mean, we traditionally pay our taxes, I mean, 98% election rate. But you put people to the wall, you're gonna pay taxes, you're gonna feed your kid, you know? So there are some potential issues here really for our district. So we really have to proceed cautiously. And just, you know, hopefully we can bump out of this and get things rolling, but you know, you, you hear about the fears of getting another round next fall and, you know, I just couldn't imagine. But, so this is kind of the things that we're hearing. Obviously, it's day by day. The other thing is, you know, January 1st, 2021 is a reassessment year. So all this will kind of play into that, into that reassessment calculation. So just interesting, it's an interesting time. Any questions there? Okay, so the other piece is, you know, I don't have the numbers of how close we are to our levy. We're, we have a little bit of wiggle room with our levy, but when a set evaluation changes, the levy automatically changes. And if it's essential evaluation increases, your, your levy actually decreases. If the money goes down, your levy can go up. But if we're already close to that ceiling to the max, we're not gonna get more revenue. We're not gonna be able to capture this revenue by raising our tax rate because we're already limited on what we can do. So, and then it comes a conversation, you know, if we're talking about salaries and other things, what does this look like down the, down the road, you know, going to taxpayers to try to get a tax rate increase? And, you know, so it's just so much speculation at this point. We just don't know how to proceed. We just don't know enough at this point. So not trying to be all doom and gloom, but we'll, we'll see how this all kind of plays out over time. But I think this is good information for us as a board and, you know, administrators to know when we're talking about salary increases, we're talking, and I, I failed to say that. I know, I came right away, honestly, it wasn't even a question from any of you about continuing to pay our people. And what a blessing for our employees to be continuing to get a paycheck. And I, I mean, we have talked about that multiple times as an admin team, as a family, and that's really speaks a lot to you as a board, to just wanna take care of our teachers and our staff and employees. So thank you so much for that. So, yeah, I mean, this is just kind of the summary, you know, all of it's just kind of depends on the time and, you know, just how long we're in this. And I, I just think, again, drafting that budget, we're gonna really need to, I, I had somebody, somebody came in and asked me for something the other day, are we gonna be able to purchase this item? And, you know, it was about $17,000 and I, I mean, we just, no, I mean, is it, can you not survive? Is it critical? Is it mission critical? I mean, even Steve and I talked about like today, what in our operational plan is mission critical? Like, if we don't do it, we're gonna be spending thousands of more dollars, you know? So these are tough conversations that we're having. We are going, I'm gonna be setting up meetings with everyone that has a budget Zoom meetings, unfortunately, but we don't have the budget over the next couple of weeks. Kind of, I'm gonna work through some situations with the budget on kind of where I think it needs to land, and then talk with each administrator and director where they're at, where, what their needs are, and really try to figure out, what do we need to just get by? My number one goal is to continue to be able to keep our, our employees on payroll and we keep working. Unfortunately, we, we do know that we're gonna save some money in some areas with technology, that, that being one big area that we're gonna need to just kind of hold on to and not spend at this point in time, you know, and just be conservative with that. So questions, comments, thoughts about that? I'll share it with you. I know that was a lot of information. I'll share it with you. So you have that and talking points, too. You can kind of look at that.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, I guess, do you wanna go into, I've kind of talked about this.
Well, yeah, I, I think it's important that we talk about it again. Travis and I have met with, it was last couple of weeks, we've met with every, every, every person that's in charge of an action team, and our action teams are actually, have been working fastly. Some of them are pretty close to done, it's not done. One of them's done. They've been doing all the work and some of them just been advancing. The most, actually, every team has been just progressing rapidly through it. And Travis and I met with all the action team leaders. We've been evaluating, I mean, it's gonna be, it's, I, I don't know, I get goosebumps when I think about it. The, the work that's been done and where it will lead the district. And, you know, I know right now with the pandemic and the economy and all those concerns, we're gonna be able to make some wonderful things happen. It'll be up to us to be able to determine what we tackle first, second, third, and how we progress through that. But I could, I, I think you're gonna be really excited once you see the final product and see it kind of all together. Great things, resource-based practices that are good for kids. So very, very exciting. You have any, any questions? So right now, June 16th and 17th is the date. I think that's the same date for July. No, July 15th and 16th is another second date. So we're just kind of playing. Do you have any questions for me?
Good. We jump into the.
This will go to, I mean, you're like, we're kind of talking a little bit of that one, too, the end of the school year scenario. Yeah. Yeah. So Desi has basically said that obviously any days during this pandemic are waived. So we're not gonna have to worry about that, but we are required, they've been kind of threatening people, they're required to continue to stick with our school calendar. So for us, what that means is students will be working at home with new information and stuff that's teachers give up through May 15th. And then after May 15th, that's like, that gives us another week for teachers and students, students to submit final work, get grades done and have everything kind of finalized. So and that's kind of the plan for that. We're, Travis and I, we meet with our central office team every week, our administrators weekly. We have already with our coaches and our teachers, they're starting to work at least once a week, every team, content team or grade level teams beginning to work to collaborate on the four-day school week and working on pacing guides and what that will look like. So we're trying to maximize that time right now to, to make some preparations for that. Just to also to update you, we have, we've already initiated early graduation conversations. We have a meeting next week and a meeting following week, so we're working through some of those details as well. So there's still a lot happening. It's maybe not quite as much as normal. It feels different. Any questions about end of school year scenarios?
Can I ask a question? So let's say that we have to push summer school off or it doesn't happen. So what about students that we have approved to graduate early? Will they be able to meet the requirements? That, that is the only question I have.
So nothing's really gonna look different. So your seniors that are already, or juniors, I mean, they're gonna be able to finish the semester out. They're gonna get a grade for the semester. And those that have to do that summer school class, we are still going to have those offerings. We're gonna have, launch will be available through Springfield School District with the Genuity for credit recovery. We have all that in place. Here's what I, I don't know if we'll have face-to-face summer school. I mean, we have it scheduled. I think it's one of the after minutes, and then actually for you to look at our plan and improve our plan. We're, we're moving forward with the plan in June. We also have a backup plan for July summer school. One thing, and I'm hoping to get direction this week, as soon as Desi can give it, they have this task force working on summer school. Cause the biggest question I have, well, one of the biggest questions I have is, is in regards to ADA in summer school. We get a big portion of that attendance, summer school attendance gets put into our, our regular formula and give us money each month throughout the school year. So if we don't have summer school, this is what everybody's wondering. Are we gonna be able to continue, are we gonna be able to get that ADA? What I would like to see happen, and I think a lot are, a lot of us feel this way, is use our ADA from last year's summer school, but I don't think that's gonna happen. I think what they're gonna do is they're gonna say, if you, if you don't want to do summer school, don't do summer school. But if you want to, you can do it virtually, but you're gonna have to have it, and it's gonna be much more mandated, much more required. So it's gonna be maybe grades submitted, some way to actually really measure the kids are in attendance. I don't know what that'll look like. So we could see a decrease in attendance. So my plan is to wait to get the information from Desi, you know, what their expectation is, and then from there, we'll decide, and part is timing. If we can do June, we're gonna do June.
Right.
But if we can do July, we'll do it face-to-face. Otherwise, we'll do an online thing because we need that ADA. And kids need it. I don't wanna sound insensitive to the academics, but we're talking about the budget and that's critical. So.
The last meeting, we talked about the possibility of asking to do June and July. To do two summer school sessions if that was possible.
Yeah, it is possible.
How that can help.
It is possible.
Yeah. And provide go while parents are hopefully working again and.
It is possible.
Can we do that?
We can. And we, we're still kind of exploring whether that's an option that people would really benefit from and take advantage of. So we, we're still talking about that. I'm, I would be shocked if we didn't be allowed to have some in June, but to have some little contingency. So we're still working on some of that. So.
One thing we didn't do last time, it was all of us, you were talking about this. We basically tabled that second group of juniors that wanted to graduate, kind of waiting to see what we decided in the summer school.
We did table that.
They're contingent upon summer.
I mean, April, we still, we still, next meeting.
We still don't have to do it.
Still have time to do it.
I'm, I forgot about it, so we. Okay.
And then one issue.
We have.
And that was something we wanted you to, you already have that one.
No, 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 that's good.
To talk about fixing this. We don't have this problem as much.
Yeah, yeah. So we're tackling it. We are, we're working on that. We, Travis already created a survey. He sent it to all the areas, all the school districts that he, you know, got information. So we're already getting information on what they do to kind of control that. I mean, you have a variety of things. You have districts that they just let, kind of like, well, we've done just whatever, whoever graduates or graduate. A lot of districts will say December is last, is that deadline. You can graduate semester early. But I think this conversation is more than just an end date. I think it's a conversation about credits, graduation requirements, summer school. Summer school, what you can accomplish with summer school. And it's a balance, like, I see both sides. I mean, and this is a conversation that we've already had, but we're gonna have, because we're gonna struggle. I mean, I see sides, we don't wanna impede a student's ability to learn and accelerate and advance. So we need to have quality courses, quality offerings, and make it feel relevant so that they can progress through standards and not be, feel like they're held back. But too many kids are saying, I'm just out for a reason, right? And so it's.
There needs to be a greater buy-in and value.
Yeah. Are, are we, is our society ready for 17-year-olds, 60, 70-year-olds to come into society to be that, you know? So, and I've talked to Dr. Suter, you know, we're all kind of on the same page, just what's the best thing to do? So right now, we're just gathering information and trying to.
I think too, when you get into the strategic plan, who you get into some of the career and readiness because I'm on that group, I think maybe some of that will help.
Internships and apprenticeship experiences.
So maybe some of that can help.
I think so. I think so.
Thank you.
Very good. So those are basically the scenarios.
All right, it's, I know we kind of talked already about the salary situation, but I don't know if there's something you need to add to that.
No, 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 we need to, we, we need to talk about this more.
Okay, all right.
Yeah. So because of, I mean, and we're gonna kind of talk about salaries, we're gonna talk about benefits because it really is hard to talk about. I mean, at this point, I, as it's, as the person responsible for the budget, I say that the individual's responsible for the budget. I think doing something drastic with salaries is not a wise thing. I, as I put in there, I think at this point in time, I would like to continue advancing steps. And that's common with what all the other area Tri-Lake school districts are doing. They're all doing the step increase, and you see the mounts there. Because.
Are, are you, is something, I'm still seeing the summary page.
Yeah. Yeah, there's, because there's nothing really, I should stop sharing until I'm ready for that. There. All right. I got a little antsy there and I don't know what happened to my PowerPoint. So it's somewhere. So I know there's a lot of different scenarios that we were hoping we could accomplish. And I know that we have an action team working on salaries. You know, I know Anne's talked about that last. There's going to be goals, but that money to do salary increase, it has to come from somewhere when, you know, our monthly payroll is a million and a half dollars, you know? It's just not a time where we feel, and I feel like for the most part, and I, you know, part of being a leader and making hard decisions is not everybody's going to agree. But this is the time where you have to make a tough decision in order to be able to protect, in my opinion, to protect jobs in the future. And so we, we approach it conservatively, grateful that we have a position, grateful that we're getting paid, especially right now when a lot of people haven't been working. Though I can go on and on. Obviously you've known, you see my notes. I, I want to make sure we're all in we're all in agreement and moving forward as a team. So what questions or thoughts or ideas do you have?
So I'm just going to say from a business owner that we've kept everybody, we've kept everybody's money coming in, whether it be salary, salary or hourly. And, and I think it's important to just slow down for a minute and just take it one day at a time because this is an ever-changing day-by-day cycle. And so I think it's very important to not to overreact, but to underreact and just take it slow because you never know what tomorrow's going to bring. And, you know, we, we certainly did not think that we were going to be jumping back into maybe reopening certain areas of our businesses in a couple of weeks, which thank goodness, we're looking at that. I don't know what that looks like. But, you know, we've got a new normal coming up and we don't know what that looks like. So I think it's important just to take things slow and just to be proactive and not to overreact. That's just my thoughts.
So let me just ask you a little bit more specifically, Kim, since you, you brought that up and I, I agree because I, I am about as conservative as you can get. I mean, at home, we're not spending money. Necessities, you know, and what are your thoughts about the staff, about the, about doing a step?
I don't think you make any move right now. That's my opinion. I don't think you make any moves whatsoever right now. From what they're saying, that everything that's going to, that was promised already for this year, it's going to be there. And so it's my opinion that you don't make any moves yet and we're not, we're not making any moves. We are, here's the thing. In our, in, for Silver Dollar City, for Branson, for our businesses, April is worse, is one of the worst, it's as worse. It is one of the worst months. It's as bad as, as February. And so just, just wait. I think that we're going to be in good shape once things come out of this. Maybe. I mean, you know, again, it's a new normal that we're looking at.
Right.
But I say we don't react. I say we don't react and we just keep. I don't think that, again, like what Anne said earlier, I'd rather overpromise, I'd rather underpromise and overproduce.
That was Jennifer.
So let's not was that Jennifer? I apologize. So I think that we don't, we just do what we've got scheduled and I don't think we make any other moves right now.
And that's, well, I really would like to echo that too, because I, you know, in a perfect world, we would love to give the teachers a raise and do all the things that we talked about. But they got, they know what this situation is. I think that they need to know that we're going to be looking at this conservatively and be wise stewards and we would be crazy to commit to something right now, like Kim said, just a month ago, when we had our board meeting, how different things were than they are now. And just in the time this action team's been working, you know, that I've been on, it's, who would have ever thought? So I really think a conservative approach is the way to go. And really when 20 million or however many people have applied for unemployment, you know, our teachers are fortunate to have a job.
And that, that's true. That's what I was going to say. I, I know teachers that are actually looking for jobs right now and they are on hold, they've done interviews and now they're not filling those positions. And I really feel like our teachers in our district, they are so appreciative and they are so bought and sold in our district as family. And I feel like we need to just hold where we're at. They have a contract. They have a job. They know they have a job and we don't take a step. And, and what we do then is we say, you know, looking forward at the strategic plan, we will look at these steps and, and this is where we're going to go. And if that doesn't happen next year, because we still aren't sure, we will at least look at it. But right now we don't need to make any jumps. We, we're doing more than some of the other districts, you know, we are paying everyone. And I think that they're very appreciative of that. And I think that's what we need to look at. I, I don't feel that we will lose anybody over.
We won't.
Oh, no.
Yeah, because I know several people looking that they have been called back and say, we're just not going to fill those positions.
Right.
And, and I just feel like that is the right move.
I agree. I mean, the absolute last thing we want to do is give, give a step and then go back a few months later and say, I'm sorry, we have to take that away. Or go to the building principals and say, hey, I'm going to leave that to you. You tell me which three I need to fire and I need to know by Friday. You know, we, we can do that. So I agree with you because we need to be conservative. Let's, let's hold where we are.
Because this is uncharted territory. This, we can't, you know, that 2008 thing, like Cody said, that didn't really, you know, we heard about it and knew that it was hard on some people. But this is, this is uncharted territory. We don't know what tomorrow's going to look like for the next day.
Kim, did you have something else you were going to say? You both kind of lit up.
I was looking at, I was just looking, going back to the packet to see if you were looking for us to vote on something or a recommendation or what you were looking for, if you were just letting us know that this.
A discussion today. We had a conversation last month. I, I got some numbers together. If we did a step, what that would look like. Also wanted to provide some insurance information for you. So you could see what that, you know, employees are going to experience about a four and a half percent increase in their insurance across the board so that you're aware of that. So I have, I have those numbers as well. If you kind of, and we'll get to that. I can show you that in a second, but I wanted you, well, let me just show it to you now.
But now there's nothing that we can do about the increase in the, the insurance. I mean, we've got to keep insurance.
No, 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 insurance. That's actually, I feel like that's a good business to do. I mean, Matt will tell you that four and a half percent is unusual. Yes. And so I just, just so clarity, I just prepared this for you. So you could kind of see if we were to absorb that at the, at a district cost, it'd be 93,000 to absorb that increase rather than to the employees. This information below certified, classified, that's what the steps are certified and classified. It's, I, I was just kind of, what I was going to kind of show is what this is going to cost employees, you know, you're, it's not significant, but it's some, you know, it could cost a family 900 bucks this year. But
I texted Cody about this and I just felt compelled as a member of the action team about salaries and benefits to bring to the board's attention the, the fact that there's considerable commenting among my action team that's comprised primarily of teachers about our high deductible. And I just, I just know that the strategic planning team will become aware of that because that's included in some of our action steps.
Well, that's why I wanted to talk about it because your text and to me, you know, you showed me that document that said, you know, our concern about us having a $5,000 deductible as opposed to other districts. And that's if you choose a certain plan. I mean, we have multiple plans and here, you, can you see this? Yeah. You see that sheet, right?
Yep.
Just making sure.
I looked at that, but where does it tell the deductible?
You can see our
Oh, I see. Okay. Yeah.
Top row here, you know, if you choose Plan Three, you're going to have a thousand dollar deductible. Now your premium, the amount of premium is going to be higher. You know, if you choose Plan 12, PPO Plan on the right, your deductible is going to be at 5,000 for the individual. You have multiple plans and, and some of those districts that were referenced on those sheets are part of the same consortium that we're part of. We have, we have a variety of options. I've been part, now part of the two largest consortiums in the state. On the last consortium I was a part of, and that was MUHP, and I was actually a board member and you know, I've also spent time evaluating some of the other districts that were part of a consortium and they decided to go solo with an independent provider. And then they experienced 30% increases after a year promises. And then now they're jumping back in the consortium. And now I'm not saying, I mean, I've already met with the independent person that, you know, I was interested in. And I think we need to explore those avenues. But as of now, I think we have, one, I haven't been to a board, a district that has paid as much as the Respring School District does for employees, including dental benefits and life. Those are
Now, is, is, is this a different page than what is embedded in our package?
Yeah, this is a separate page just because you raised the question.
Okay. Could I, could I have access to that?
You have, yeah, it's all, if you go, if you go to the Respring website and go to staff, it's all under there. This is the page you were provided and this shows the cost of the increased cost to the employees. What I like is that Gail has done here on the right, it shows how many employees are in each of those categories.
I see.
And so you can see, you know, for the first plan, employees are going to pay $370 more that year, next year than they did this year. Or, you know, depending on a plan, some of the plans will still provide, I think, a little bit of the HSA, right, Rochelle? We talked about that. Like $25 to HSA depending on what plan. That's down.
That's what most of them do, looks like.
55 of them do this plan. See 22 through HSA 21. Now you have a big difference here as well.
Oh, 99. But that's per year. That's not per month.
This is a total year cost.
So
And, and I think the other thing, Kim, and you kind of mentioned this is, you know, going cautiously. And, and I'm, I'm a hundred percent, and I think we're all in agreement and we can evaluate that as we move forward. And if some new information comes to light next month or, we can always change. The other thing I think is important, what Jolene said was really important is going back to that action planning team that's developing strategy that we're going to continue to be competitive. And I think from an employee standpoint, they're going to want to hear the board, hear the conversation be, we're not trying to stick it to you, which I know they don't know that, but that, once we get out of this, we're going to make up for this. I mean, we're going to get you back up because that's the biggest concern from employee. Well, I'm not going to get my steps. So that means next year I might get a step, but I'm still going to be behind a step. Well, those are things we can, may not happen next year, but those are things that we're going to have to make up for at some point.
And those of us who are in education back in 2008, nine and
Some schools are frozen.
Experiencing that.
Yeah.
For three years and then the fifth year we got
Some districts were frozen and some, yeah, a lot, a lot were. I didn't experience that, but others did. Yeah, they didn't have reserves. A lot of it comes down to, yeah.
So how do you propose that we
The employees are already going to know about it. I mean, as soon as I share this tomorrow in my memo, in my video, they're going to hear. And again, it's kind of like graduation. We're not going to make a hundred percent people happy and, but I, I want the message to, because this is what I feel. We don't want to do what Perry just said. We don't want to come back and say, you know what, we're going to have to cut your coworker. We're going to rip you and now you're on the bottom of the pole. So you're, you're gone. So ultimately, you know, if it's as bad as it is, then
One of the first things I ever said to you was, we have got to find the money to increase teacher pay period. I mean, we have been passionate about that from day one and, and I hope they know that that was 100% our intention, intention. And that for this pandemic, pandemic, we would have absolutely made this year. And this is outside of our control, but
And I think
We're still committed to it. We just can't.
And I think what I love about the, the action team is really working through this because we have a lot of other positions too, is not just teachers. And we have classified positions. We have nurses. We have all these other pieces that we needed, we know we need to fix. But I, you know, like my wife said, she said she multiple times, let the board know how grateful we are to have a job. You know, we're, we're making income. And so I don't think there's going to be a resistance to that and we'll, we'll just continue to evaluate it.
Just to have the insurance increase, I mean, the stuff I'm doing, most of my averages the average of the companies I represent and, and this year may be crazy because this stuff's not built into it yet. And then as all insurance companies were required to cover this now.
So I'm interested in your perspective and Matt, you can chime into this because and even Julian, from your hospital perspective, I mean, COVID, obviously if COVID patients are going, but there's not emergency, I mean, it's only emergency, it's not really non-emergent, non-essential surgeries are happening, right? Is that, we're not doing it. So, yeah, so, so, and people aren't going to the doctor. I mean, Rochelle said she went to the doctor, there's like two people, maybe not even two people there. So utilization's down. Will that benefit us? Or are the hospital sides going to say, well, utilization, that's we're going to raise prices on everything, you know?
I don't know. Part is now that they're going to balance out that the extra money that's all been poured into the COVID can balance with this elective or, well, I mean, it's elective because most elective surgeries aren't covered. But the non-essential things that would have been covered since they are not having to do that now. Now, some of them are looking like, yeah, maybe these will balance out. It won't be as bad as we thought. But the other part of that is, is they're saying, well, what we've got to count for is all these are still going to happen. And so instead of being spread out over a six-month period here, the first quarter, once these allow to happen, people are going to be slammed. Because all the surgeries are going to have to
So I will just tell you that a good friend of ours is an orthopedic surgeon at Cox. And he and his, his wife and I were talking last week and he has had 80 non-essential surgeries he's had to reschedule. Hey, they started letting them non-essential surgeries back at Cox in Springfield. And they are going to let them do Saturday surgeries also to get caught up. So I think that's a very positive thing. And I mean, this is coming from a surgeon. So he is starting to schedule surgeries. His first non-essential surgery will be tomorrow at Cox.
That's a good sign.
So that's a good thing.
And I would, I would, I would think both of them are going to do it since now they're able to do their own testing.
Yeah.
I think that's
We have a partnership together. And so what one does, the other one will do. And so, and then they both set back money so that they can put it back in if they need to.
Yeah, my son wants a longboard. I'm like, you're not getting a longboard. We're not taking you to the doctor. Because that'll happen.
I know, send the doctor.
Hey, I've got an orthopedic surgeon course when you're ready.
So it sounds like we're all on the same page with salaries and benefits. So we're ready to move on to the next part of the agenda, Matt. Second mission.
Next, we've got a few. It's a Board of Education extends sincere thanks to the following groups. Volunteer, food service staff, not staff, and organizing, preparing and distributing food to students throughout the district. Staff and teachers have been posting and reading online, preparing instruction, information for students. The botany department for providing plants for sale. And all those behind the scenes that are helping the school function on a day-to-day basis. Also a quick thank you to Central Bank for paying approximately a thousand dollars for outstanding bill accounts for school districts.
That's nice.
We also have, I want to congratulate Mr. Perry Phillips, a member of the Board of Education, who has received advanced board member certification from MSBA.
Good job.
For you, for your work. I know Perry, Perry talked a couple of times about his book he's been reading. Are you done?
Actually, I didn't read three of them.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Three books. Okay. Appreciate your investment. Good work.
Is, back to Central Bank, was that Central Bank of the Ozarks, the one out of, that operates out of Walmart or do we know?
I personally don't know specifically.
Okay.
I think it's Branson.
Yeah, it said Central Bank, Branson Online.
Did they get, are we going to send them a thank you note or?
Yeah, we're doing social media posts and
Okay.
Good.
You should have Ambi the thank you note person. She's good at thank you notes.
Yeah.
We appreciate that. All right, summer school. So it's, it's just an application we have to submit to Desi. It's supposed to have board approval. Phase one, we may amend it to do, you know, some, some, something different, but we need to at least get it in. Well, and this one's different too, because if June doesn't happen, we're going to have to revise.
And it says that we have that written down.
So we're still, we still need to work through that.
So we've got a deadline that we've got to submit this, right, to Desi?
Yeah. The application is really not a serious application. It's a formality. It's really, yeah, it's just, they're basically going, are we having summer school? It can be adjusted. It can be edited. I mean, so, but we just need to get it in.
I make the motion to approve the recommendation as mentioned above.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
A second one, Jolene?
That's what I got.
My God.
Kim?
I got Kim and Julie.
Okay, okay, good.
All right. And then we talked about the employee benefits. Anybody have any more questions towards that?
Did, did everybody vote on that last one?
Yes.
Let's do that again, just to make sure.
Uh, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Good.
Matt, we do need to just quickly be, I don't know if the board's done this in the past. I just would like the board to approve the plans as presented. I just think it's good for the board to have approval of, of those.
Approved what?
Plans that were presented.
Oh.
I, I didn't know if you did or not. Okay.
No, no, we haven't done that. I was next. I just wanted to make sure no one else had any more questions, what we've already talked about. So.
Plans, the actual plans and what's provided hasn't changed. Nothing changes for them. Matt is going to start providing the employee assistance program so that they can get some additional free counseling sessions. There's a variety of things that are part of that. But the, you can just see the cost increase, increases.
Okay.
Otherwise everything stays the same.
Stay the same. Okay. Well, just, then we'll just do the recommendation to approve the, the health insurance plans that are presented. Do I have a motion?
Go man.
Second.
Who was that? Second, sorry.
Kim.
Yeah. Uh, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
No abstain? All right. So that is the end of it there. It's a, to adjournment at seven 14. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion. We adjourn.
We need a mill.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Perry.
Perry. All right. All in favor? Aye.
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 No.
Thank you.
Today's Jay's birthday.
Hey, Matt?
Yes.
You do have some things that need to be signed.
Yes. Do you, uh, I mean, you, you guys can be right there. You want me to come by more?
Now, that'd be fine.
Okay, I can do that.
Okay, perfect.
All right.
And Rochelle, I'll send in the oath of office thing to you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, just nail that. Please you and Adam both.
Thank you. Good night all.
Bye.
Be well. Today's Jay's birthday. Say happy birthday, Jay.